Is here tonight as well if you have any questions.
Is there any questions with counsel to ask of the contract? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to a group. So. Let's move it in second. Megan will call please.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero passes. Next up we have a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero six. Without objection, we should resist this council members present. Seeing no objections, Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
A resolution approving a temporary employment agreement with Pam Hilton relating to additional duties, responsibilities, and compensation as interim city manager.
And you want to... I think this kind of stuff is going to be... So this is the resolution that probably makes Pam the interim city manager. Is there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to a group. Stephanie, Megan will call please.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero six passes. Next we have on our agenda a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero seven. Without objection, we should resist this council members present. Seeing no objection, Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
A resolution adopting the purpose that the My Brothers Keeper Action Plan.
Megan will ask you. We need to do a presentation for the three different committees regarding the My Brother's Keeper Plan. Megan, we will give the favor to which... Also, Megan was the point person on it. You didn't thank her. Go ahead, Megan.
City staff has reviewed the draft action plan that was presented to the city council and recommends the council adopt a final action plan to address two of the My Brothers Keeper goals. All children at school cognitively, physically, socially, and emotionally prepared, and all young people are safe from violent crime. The staff recommendation to address the two goals would base upon a low cost of implementation and the ability to utilize existing models, which include clear tracking measures. Staff also recommends continuing to work on the goal of all young people to complete post-secondary education and training by looking at further resources and models that may be available to assist with implementation of those recommendations at a later date.
Any other questions? Counselor, congratulations on the work that you've been doing. Second. Any other questions to comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to a group. So. Stephanie, Megan will call please.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero seven passes. Now, the resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero eight, without objection, we should resist this council members present. Seeing no objection, Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
A resolution authorizing certain actions in connection with the acquisition of a temporary construction easement for the Woodstock Road project.
Megan, I have got a presentation on this already.
Yes, yes, Emerson had committed a previous presentation. Emerson Electric Company has agreed to pay the cost to complete necessary improvements to Woodstock Road due to the increased truck traffic as part of Emerson's operations. As part of this project, Woodstock Road is being widened and leveled. During the right-of-way acquisition process, it was discovered that the sole owner of the property at seventy-four fifty-one Woodstock is deceased. With no known executors or heirs to contact to acquire the necessary temporary construction easement, the city needs to use eminent domain to have working room for the project and be allowed to enter upon the right of driveway in order to replace and align the driveway apron and the new road improvements. This resolution will not allow the permanent acquisition of any property. And there is a representative from Emerson here tonight as well that can answer any other questions on the conference.
Any questions for staff, for representative Emerson? Can we see it? I guess you did one, but can we hear from the...
Sure.
Mr. Baker's here. If you remember, I'm just... Councilman Mayor, my name is Tim Baker. I'm Colton Associates. I'm here on behalf of Emerson Electric. We've been in the process of negotiating the easements along Woodstock. We've been successful on... But I'm looking at deceased. So, right now, we've got the plans adjusted to avoid them, but it would be preferred if we could get them in the domain to secure this life easement that we need.
Thank you. Any further questions? I'll entertain a motion to a resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero eight.
I'm going to take a brief question two thousand fifteen dash zero eight.
Let's move it in second. Megan will call please.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero eight passes. Next we have on our agenda bills for first reading. We first have bill seven zero seven six. Without objection, we should resist this council members present. Seeing no objections, Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance affirming the plans and other approvals with respect to the downtown redevelopment area, making certain findings with respect to and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other agreements between the city and Michael Palmer relative to property at two thirty-five South Florissant Road, and authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of the property.
Sam?
Mike Palmer is proposing to redevelop the former Kawasaki dealership at two thirty-five South Florissant Road. The redevelopment will involve adding a two-story addition to create a thirty-three-thousand square foot predominantly residential and mixed-use facility. It will include three commercial spaces totaling four thousand two hundred and seventy-two square feet and twenty-three apartments, which will consist of one and two bedrooms and live-work style units. The development will create attractive market rate apartments in the downtown area, and Mr. Palmer is requesting eight hundred and forty-eight thousand five dollars in tip funds, which represents just over fifteen percent of his five-point-five million dollar budget. Mr. Palmer will be paid half of that request upon commencement of the project, which will happen sometime after July of two thousand and fifteen. The remainder of the payments will be pro-rated out through twenty twenty.
Can you have... I know there are some drawings that we have available for...
I do not have the drawings of this tonight.
It would just be good to show, you know, so they can see what... Put a face kind of with what all these parts are.
Absolutely. Okay.
You can go to the website, you know, maybe at least on the library or something.
Sure.
And so we'll start reading at the next meeting.
We can have them available at...
Thank you. It is just first reading. There's no further action required. Bill seven zero seven seven. Would you like to introduce this council members present? Seeing no objections, Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance affirming the plans and other approvals with respect to the downtown redevelopment area, making certain findings with respect to and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and other agreements between the city and J. Keith Gordon relative to property at two nineteen North Florissant Road, and authorizing other related actions in connection with the redevelopment of the property.
Mr. Keith Gordon is proposing to purchase and rebuild the former KFC at two nineteen North Florissant Road into a premium deli and sandwich shop called Ferguson Del. Ferguson Del is a feature unique Cajun-inspired breakfast lunch and dinner menu along North Florissant Road, which is lacking in our town options since KFC vacated the year. In addition to building acquisition, upgrades to the building will include flooring repairs, fire suppression upgrades, HVAC, replacement and upgrades to the HVAC as well, restroom upgrades, new monument signage, landscaping, and parking lot resurfacing. Mr. Gordon is requesting fifty thousand in tip funds to be paid upon completion of the purchase of the property, completion of the renovations, and passing all necessary inspections. Mr. Gordon is here tonight.
Mr. Gordon, would you like to introduce yourself to council and the city?
It's been a pleasure to be here. It's an honor to be here before you this evening. We look forward to opening our new premium deli. We're focused on building high-quality, high-end daily food. We're utilizing products from local vendors, and we're focusing on an attractive, friendly opportunity for employment of residents in Ferguson and adjoining communities. One of the good key points that we have is that we're teaming with culinary teams to offer scholarships for some of our employees and also to hire chefs, so we have a high-end premium deli for the residents and redevelopment activities here in the community.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Because as a first reading, there's no further action required this evening. Next bill is seven zero seven one. This is bills for second reading. I'll entertain a motion to have the bill read a second time. Place a response message.
Aye.
All right, so move it in second. Second, Megan will read the bill first please.
An ordinance of the city of Ferguson, Missouri creating a special use permit to Presley Turner for the purpose of operating a childcare center at one zero two four South Florissant Road, building one zero two zero, subject to the conditions, restrictions, and requirements set forth herein.
We have a public hearing on this special reason from our last meeting. Should I have further questions from the council? Seeing none, Megan will call please.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Councilman Noel.
Aye.
Bill seven zero seven one passes. Next we have bill seven zero seven two. I'll entertain a motion to have the bill read a second time. So. Move it in second. Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance limiting special tax bills against certain properties for the cost of cutting and removing weeds as provided under chapter forty-six vegetation article three, weed and vines of the code of the city of Ferguson, Missouri.
Questions? Seeing none, Megan will call please.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Bill seven zero seven two passes. Just for the public, bill seven zero seven two, seven three, seven four, and seven five are bills that we have to ask every so often to levy properties that are really liquid and now they're having their free trash or the things removed in the city isn't paying to have that removed before that. So we require cost by letting these weeds against the properties, so that is what these four bills are for. Bill seven zero seven three. Will there be a second time for this response message? So. Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance limiting special tax bills against certain properties for the cost of removing trash and debris as provided under chapter twenty-eight nuisances of the code of the city of Ferguson, Missouri.
Any questions, Mr. Council? Seeing none, Megan will call please.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Bill seven zero seven three passes. Bill seven zero seven four, I'll entertain a motion to have the bill read a second time. Place a response message. Move it in second. Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance limiting special tax bills against certain properties for the cost of boarding of buildings as provided under chapter seven Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of the City of Ferguson, Missouri.
Questions of the council? The council? Seeing none, Megan, please call overall.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Bill seven zero seven four passes. Next we have bill seven zero seven five. I'll entertain a motion to have it read a second time. Place a response message. Move it in second. Stephanie, we read the title of the resolution first please.
An ordinance limiting special tax bills against certain properties for the cost of demolishing dangerous buildings as provided under chapter seven Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of the City of Ferguson, Missouri.
Questions? Seeing none, Megan will call overall.
Councilman Morrison.
Aye.
Councilman James.
Aye.
Mayor Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Burn.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilman Hammond.
Aye.
Councilman Houstert.
Aye.
Bill seven zero seven five passes. Next we have on our agenda public comments. This is the opportunity for anyone from the city to address the council or any matters pertaining to city government. All we can do is ask that you raise your hand if you wish to be called. When we do call each of the meeting in the podium, please say your name and address to the record, and also please sign in at the folder either on or beneath the podium. With that, I know Mr. Graff was quick to raise his hand in the back, and I was saying Brad.
Mike McGrath, fifteen ninety-nine Goldstone. As most of you know, and the others who go, I'm running for council for award one, but I wanted to let everyone know that here in the room tonight at home watching and meeting in the back room that there's one more candidate for him. It will be Monday, March thirtieth, at Paraded Grace Church. Starts at seven P.M. It's located at thirty-six ninety Pershale Road. It's approximately a half mile east from Elizabeth or from the Clurgham towards Flow Valley. So anyone that hasn't had a chance yet to hear the candidates, all eight candidates will be there for all three wards. I suggest and encourage you to come out and listen and hear and hear who's running for your ward and make your choice if you haven't already. Thank you.
I've already signed in. My name is Susan Aikenbrand. I live at seven eleven Darce Road. I want to say first, in the interest of whole disclosure, that I served sixteen years on Ferguson City Council, so I'm sure that some of you, that makes me suspect. But let me add that when we moved here forty years ago, we did so because we wanted our sons to attend integrated schools. At the time, Ferguson Morrison's school district was under court ordered integration, and we moved from a district that was almost totally white. Our neighbors thought that we had lost our minds. Having said that, my husband and I continue to be committed to integration. Many of us who have stayed in this community are committed to diversity and to all that entails. We do not believe that white flight solves anything. I heard protester on the radio recently say, "We are women." I really like an explanation of what that really means, what of real substance has been won. Have we begun or have we continued courageous conversations that I think are part markers of real and lasting change? I have offered and in some cases begged to have some civil discourse. We can yell, and we can shout, and we can posture all we want, but I don't think that's going to move us forward. And I think that many of us in this community are hoping that we can move forward.
Megan's first, last.
Thank you for the question. Thank you, hard to head. A couple of things. First, congratulations, Ms. Hilton, and I hope that we can look forward to an enhanced and expanded transparency and communication with citizens, something that we've been lacking, and looking forward to working with you to make that happen on behalf of the community. Secondly, I would like for the city of Delwood to consider a true amnesty program and examples set by our neighbors in Delwood where they have eliminated and thrown out the cases and the tickets of people that have been charged there in an attempt to start over and move forward fresh. I think it's a great little bit of reconciliation, and it's a good faith effort. I believe that's something we can do here, and I'm sure that Mayor Jones and their city attorney, Donald Smith, will help you understand what that looks like. Third, I think that we deserve details of the separation agreements as public. If there are funds in contract for an extended period in those agreements, I think that the citizenry has a right to know what that looks like and the extent of that and what it's costing us to have these separations. Fourth, for the Palmer Construction Project, a request for eight hundred thousand dollars is significant, especially as it relates to the overall cost of the construction project as reported here tonight, and I think that Mr. Palmer should set aside a portion of those residences and make them available for low-to-high income families so that they are truly accessible. In addition to that, I would like for this council to require that he meet a goal of employment for residents in the community, something that we desperately need. And I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Gordon. I appreciate your consideration of employment for residents.
I have the information on the separation party released and printed in the media, and they are available at request, so if you like that, you can make a request at the hall.
Mayor Noel and members of the council, I stand on behalf of the employment commissioners of Ferguson Human Rights Commission, established under municipal code some years ago. The commission has neither had formed nor taken action for a number of years. Commission members are Patricia Cohen, Molly Rockmans, Harry Thompson, Ella Jones, Paul, Tony Dupree, and Ostentia, and Edward Johnson as chair. Together, we commit to serve faithfully this volunteer service on behalf of the city of Ferguson and its citizens. We promise to hold our city, its leadership, staff, and partners to task of just equitable and humane treatment. Likewise, the leadership of this commission will remain answerable to the questions, concerns, and rights of Ferguson residents. Lastly, we have been diligently at work, and in keeping with the code, the commission shall make a formal recommendation to the city council with regards to actions, policies, and legislation in furtherance of the policy to prevent and eliminate discriminatory practices. We hope to make this presentation to this august body at the April twenty-eighth meeting. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, and constituents. My name is Dr. Courtney Michelle Graves, and I'm running for the Ferguson Florissant School Board. I am here today to stress the importance of the school board and how it is the glue that holds all of our cities together. So I'm just here to let you know who I am and to let you know that my message is out there that we are facing accreditation, and we have to make sure that we all vote on April seventh. So once again, my name is Dr. Courtney Michelle Graves, and I'm running for the Ferguson So once again, my name is Dr. Courtney Michelle Graves, and I'm running for the Ferguson-Furerson School Board. The school board is important, and we cannot forget about the school board during this election. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize, Jenai. I'm so sorry. Make sure you vote yes to apologize back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Wilson, a longtime Ferguson resident. Welcome back, Louis. Want to say thank you to the Department of Justice. However, I'm not told to be satisfied. We will not accept anything but the ultimate final goal, which is complete freedom, justice, and equality for all Americans. I support no laws that discriminate or oppress anyone. If a law privileges me and oppresses him, I don't like it. Therefore, I see the same thing I saw back in August. I see basically taxation without representation. One of my favorite sayings is, "The oppressor's latest counter. The oppressor's latest trick." It was the Ferguson Commission, now the Supreme Judge, with the policy from his words. This will emulate the standards across the county. Will the standards across the county perpetuate the status quo? For example, if you renewed your insurance for your auto yesterday and you left it on the dresser at home and you get a ticket, and the officer says, "Don't worry. When you go to court," and I'm talking St. Louis County, they'll throw it out. Well, they did throw the ticket out, and they charged me eighty-eight fifty cost of court. To be fair, though, when I went to pay it, oh, the eighty-eight fifty was to go up if not paying in thirty days. When I went to pay it, they did reduce it. Well, he did you a favor. He reduced it to sixty-two fifty. Well, thank you. Okay? That's just one thing. Being a Ferguson resident and caring so much, oh, we are just getting started. The party ain't over. Next on the list, all businesses with gracious ownership. Thank you. Have a good evening. Hello, how you doing? I have been calling over and over and over again on your telephone trying to find out my next court date, sir. Or your telephone lines up.
You need to call the court clerk's office down there.
Sir, my finger was doing the walk. Or your telephone lines up, sir. I called City Hall. I called the police department. I called clerk. I called administrators. I went up and down the line, sir, and I still didn't receive any kind of response. That's why I'm here. Maybe I can go back there and find out when is my next court date from one of your offices. Do you think that's possible and are feasible, sir?
You're going to need to contact the court clerk tomorrow for a business hours.
And I'll be back here tomorrow, sir, and reserve my jail cell. Speaking of a jail cell, is it possible? Is it feasible for you to reduce your bond for administrators here in Ferguson? All across the region, tuition service, trust passing is two hundred and fifty dollars. If you're truly talking about moving towards the healing process, reduce that one thousand dollar bond to get out of jail. Stop the pimp game, please, sir. I'll see you tomorrow.
Hi, my name is Aunt Ashley Kidd. I'm a resident in Ferguson, eleven years. I just wanted to let everyone know that One Ferguson will be hosting a town hall meeting this Thursday evening from six to eight in the multipurpose room of a student center at Foreston Valley Community College. That's this Thursday evening from six to eight at Flow Valley. Representatives from the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice will be present to answer questions about the recent Department of Justice reports regarding Ferguson, provide insight into the process going forward, and most important garner feedback from the community on what we want our police department to look like in the future. This will be an interactive dialogue format so as many voices can be heard and as many questions as possible can be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, members of the city. My name is Elizabeth Ray, and I reside at one-two-two-zero Oak Drive. I've been a member of the city of Ferguson since nineteen seventy-nine. Since that time, I've tried to stay away from politics. Politics isn't what I like. But I have one question for the mayor and the city council. We separated ourselves from my past chief of police, and I have a question about the separation agreement. Why did we agree to give him one year's service pay, which is an amount of ninety-six thousand dollars plus one year of insurance for he and his family? I think that is very appalling. Can you answer?
This is a public comment portion. You know, we do not answer questions on the dais.
I think the city of Ferguson...
It's not a question and answer, but you can ask the question, and we'd be happy to get back with you or then answer.
Can you get back to me with that particular information?
Sure.
This is also a time of healing, ladies and gentlemen. We should be trying to move to the next step here. Forget about what has happened here, try to make our city a better city. If we don't, we'll be here spinning on wheels for many, many, many days, arguing one side against each other. What we need to do is at this point, we have an opportunity to make this city a great city again. The time has come. We must act now. Don't wait for tomorrow. If we wait, we have problems.
Is there anyone else who'd like to... Yes, ma'am. Make sure you scream in the mic, too. Thank you. That's why they didn't mind. Keep that. Sorry.
Have we thought about moving that on the structure of our town? You know, this resident, and this is the city council, you know, and this city manager. Yes. About changing that, whereas the city manager not have so much power that we instead of having a part-time manager, instead of you being a part-time, how about full-time? Having less. I'm talking about a mayor, whether it's him or whomever. I'm just talking about a mayor having a full-time position and this city manager having less.
That's something to ask you then by charter, but...
But who's responsible?
They're responsible.
Okay, if I'm responsible, so I have a lot of...
No, I'm just saying, the people, what we can do is we'd be happy to, since you want to implement that information, we can make that information available about how charter changes can be done, because there's several different ways. So instead of answering that question, what we can do is we can provide that information. You can either want to contact Megan, or you can have Megan follow up with you and make sure you sign in your name and information with how charter changes can be done. And that way, it can change a lot now we can do. But yeah, if this happens with the people, not just you, but everybody.
I knew it was just me.
We don't want to put that on you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council this evening? Yes, ma'am. We have typically asked for the top one.
I know, but I just need to do something real quickly. How will I learn whether or not my suggestions to have the construction project include a resident employee program as well as a set of such low to moderate income families? When will I get follow-up for my inquiry? You didn't obviously...
The second reading will be the next meeting. So any changes to the bill that would require anything like that would be in the next meeting. If you want to follow up with us afterwards, obviously, these are individually, we can talk to you about suggestions.
Hello, I'm Emily Naves. I live at the twelve thirty-three Hudson. This is going to be short. I've mentioned this before, but there are all over the country communities that have successful civilian armed wars, communities that have racial justice plans, communities that have restorative justice programs. They're out there. They're interested in helping us. They're willing to do this. I would encourage and appreciate the city soliciting the support of these programs that have been successful, communities that seem successful. Find out what worked for them, what didn't work for them, how they wish they had done things differently in the process of moving forward. We need to not try to completely reinvent this wheel ourselves. Other people have done this, and they've been successful, so we need to reach out.
Is there any questions or comments this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Good evening, citizens. I'm going to bring some good news. This weekend, I had a... Well, it's been the last three months. I've had a very nice time with FYI. I volunteered for FYI starting in January. I went to all the groups, all the different organizations that are going around in Ferguson, and I felt nobody was really making a move towards the youth. So I stepped out and got into FYI a hundred percent. FYI is a great organization, but we have very little support from our citizens. We ask for volunteers. We ask for donations. Couple organizations have stepped up big time. The Y cuts out three hours a month where we take the youth in, and they do basketball. They do swimming. They have movies, karaoke. We get pizzas donated. We get subs. We get wings donated. But the major part of this structure are volunteers, and those are one of the hardest things to organize or to get. It's only a few hours a week, and sometimes I think we have to come out of our comfort zone and enjoy our youth. Those are the ones that are crying out. This age starts at thirteen to eighteen, and they come in and they have such a good time, and they're good people, and they're good young adults. Prime example, I got some hot sunglasses, and I set them down, and they came up missing during the FYI night out, but they came back before the night ended. I was very impressed, and I'll be with FYI forever because that'll let you know what kind of kids, what kind of young adults that we have in our area. And I hope we get some of our neighbors and some of our business owners and some of the people that sit right here in the room to step up and become a part of FYI. Thank you.
I just want to say something straight.
You also sign in.
I'm sorry.
I know most of us know you. And love you, too.
Anything you would like to say to me in the executive director of the Pac Community Resource Center? And I would like to address the fact about the citizens not being resourceful or partaking when necessary. I know about a hundred and four volunteers from citizens inside of Ferguson. We have been at Pac for over fifty years, and I'd like to tell you that we are promoting the youth extensively. And so, Adrian, when you come over to FYI, come over to Pac and see what we're doing with robotics. Last week, when we were in Genesee City, a lot of the councilors and the senators came out just to see what we're doing at Ferguson. And we are having Saturday Super Saturdays every week. In one of our schools, they open up the gymnasium for us to just enjoy the kids. They do robotics. They come and do basketball. Whatever it is, we do chess. We have people coming from all over the area. So I don't want anybody in this room or anybody that is listening to think that the citizens inside of Ferguson are not doing and have not been doing what they need to do to the youth. And I just sent in some of those questions we received today, that how many youth that we have touched this year alone, over four hundred youth inside of Ferguson-Furerson. We have eighteen hundred homeless students from Ferguson-Furerson School District inside of Ferguson. You know, it's volunteers who's helping Pac to make room and do all that we can and need to do for those students who live inside hotels and out there on the street. But what they are, they're bunkers. They're living with people that probably don't want them there because they don't have enough room. But there are a lot of things that we need to do, and I'm telling you, if it were not for the volunteers inside of this city, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council this evening?
Hi, my name is Molly Rockman. I'm a resident of Ferguson since two thousand nine, and I also am the founding director for Stan's Organic Corn School in Ferguson. So I spend most of my time here. I wanted, after hearing your praise of FYI, I wanted to echo that, and also it brought to mind that, I think it's worth mentioning that there's a few businesses that have opened in Ferguson in recent times, and I just think it's great for us to all give those businesses our business as much as possible, the own internal yoga studio, cigar bar even. And opening this weekend is JMC Barbecue and Blues, if it hasn't been mentioned already. Very exciting. Also this weekend, just an announcement that we're going to be planting over sixty fruit trees on the historic Miller Farm in Earth Dance if anyone would like to join us. I think if there's one thing that brings folks together, it's food. So come out to the farm. We're on Date Avenue, South Date, and come plant some fruit trees with us that we'll all enjoy for years to come.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council this evening? Seem none? This is a public comment portion of the meeting. We'll move on to closed session. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for seventy-six ten quarters one of the minor statutes in the state of Missouri. Closed session is running.
Must be personnel issues then. Oh, I guess they're going into closed session. So I guess we all have to leave. Oh, they go in the back room. Okay, well, I guess that's it for the meeting. They're going to go into closed session. Hi, Chris. Hey, did that lady, did she say there was eighteen hundred homeless students in the Ferguson-Furerson District? Really? That's what I thought she said. I'm gonna, yeah, wow. Right. Home. Right, right. I under... Yeah. Wow. That's, that's a big number. Okay, well, since the meet, they're going into closed session, I'm going to go ahead and shut off the stream. Bye-bye.